...release time has up to 23 million hours annually at a cost to taxpayers nationwide of more than a billion dollars. All over the U.S., cities and states are waking up to this often-hidden clause in contracts, which often dates back 20, 30, 40 years, and they're making changes to make sure their citizens' taxes are going to things that benefit the citizens. In fact, Arizona trial court, an Arizona trial court, recently found that this practice of union release time is clearly unconstitutional and that it was in violation of that state's constitutional gift clause, which strictly forbids public money held in trust for the state government and its legislators in funding private benefits, including union activism. In fact, 47 of our 50 states also have this same clause, and it prevents states' governments from endangering publicly-held funds by investing or giving them to non-governmental private entities such as a union. And in state after state, these classes are being, uh, these cases are being argued and found to be unconstitutional. Alas, Maine is only one of just three states whose constitution does not specifically contain such a clause. Perhaps if this loophole didn't exist, a great northern paper company, which may cost taxpayers $19 million of public money used to subsidize a private entity, may never have happened. And perhaps union release time and the hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars paid to private entity unions instead of for the benefit of taxpayers would also never have been allowed. Constitutional loophole or not, there is little room for arguing that the taxpayer benefits at all from the release time provision. Ask a taxpayer if they think they're best served when the public employee hired to do a job actually does the job they were hired to do, or do they think their tax dollars should pay for union activities? My guess is they'll tell you that pulling employees away from their duties to perform union work is therefore quintessentially a non-public purpose. This is even more pronounced in cases of police officers and firefighters, who, when they go to unreleased time, stop protecting the public in order to start protecting the union. This bill has nothing to do with right to work. Whether you're pro-union or open shop, or somewhere in between, is irrelevant for this question. This bill only deals with one simple question: Do you, a legislator bound by the oath to protect the best interests of the citizen taxpayer and their money entrusted to us to effectively manage as they would want, do you think that they would approve this practice? And can they still trust us? I think you may know the answer. Show the taxpayers of the state of Maine that they sent a white person to represent their interests and end this inappropriate practice now. Thank you for allowing me to pose this question to you and try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Representative. I'm actually answered a lot of questions. Anyone else? Representative Hart.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Representative Ward. Um, are you or have you been an employee of the state of Maine?
I have.
You have? When was that?
Um, in the mid-1980s.
So I'm assuming that you just, the examples that you're giving are, these are things that you saw firsthand?
No, these are things that I've read about.
You've read it out?
Yes.
Where?
Uh, different articles, different sources. I could be happy to pull those up and bring them to you.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I think you're sort of stating quite a few things as fact here, and I think we'd really like to know where you're going.
I'd be thrilled to give that to you. Thank you for asking, Representative Hart.
Senator Hackett?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. There are, what, 14,000 something state employees?
I'm not sure.
There's a large number. And, uh, would you say there's a potential to have a complex between the management and hourly workforces within a 14,000 or more member unit?
Is a potential for conflict between--
Probably.
--management? Um, yeah, of course there is, yes.
Are the union members state workers?
Thanks, I'm not sure I follow your question.
Are the shop stewards state workers?
In this case, we're referring to our state employees, yes.
So it's the state employees. And--
And Senator, I should point out, too, that the description of the, of release time, because there are so many contracts and bargaining units out there to review, my description is meant to be more of a nationwide description. For instance, I mentioned there are three different types of release time. One would have to go through every single bargaining union contract, first of all, to see if it's even in there. I, I looked at four. The first four I found it, so I stopped there. But then also to determine what type it is. Now, if you refer to the handout that I gave you in addition to that, Senator, you may see there are sections there that are underlined, and if you'll indulge me. For instance, you were asking about different classifications of employees. Article 29 states that states shall provide employee organization leave without loss of pay or benefits for members and officers of the MSEA/SEIU board of directors to attend a maximum of four one-day meetings per year of board of directors. And they go on to list the, the size of the board of directors, up to 16 members, I believe. The state shall provide one day a year employee organization leave with pay up to 290, or up to 290 MSEA/SEIU members per year. Um, and then if you looked under leave--
Well, official capacity.
Official, yeah. If you look under section B on page 31, members of the SE, MSEA/SEIU bargaining team whose numbers shall not exceed four for each unit plus the president, vice president, shall suffer no loss in pay or benefits for participation in negotiations for successor agreement. And then I think if you turn the next page, they talk about also stewards and shop stewards shall be entitled to two days paid leave per year without loss of benefits to participate in official MSEA/SEIU spot steward training. And then down below, the grievance committee, and these are just different organizational sub-units within the union, and I just kept reading, MSEA/SEIU grievance committee members traveling 100 miles or more shall be entitled to leave without loss of pay or benefits for actual or necessary travel time. The state agrees to provide up to four days leave of absence without loss of pay or benefits for each of the four grievance committee members. I found these same provisions, um, in all four of those, and then I just, I stopped. I, there were so many, I could've spent a week looking at them. And Senator, I'm not saying that every single bargaining unit has these clauses in there, but is any of it too much? And I bounced this off a lot of constituents in the last couple of months since I submitted the, the title, and they were shocked. They didn't know that this went on. In fact, in doing my research, I found that in many cases, legislature after legislature, bargaining teams after bargaining teams kind of overlook those provisions as being part of the norm. And it's probably something that's worth bringing to light, Senator, and then asking the committee, do you think it's right? And what do we think our constituents would feel about this question?
Do you think the, it's not a value to the state of Maine having people that can work? Because the way I look at a union is partnership with a company, a partnership with the state, and if you have well-trained shop stewards that can, uh, that are highly trained, highly motivated, can get issues settled in a expedient manner, is actually going to save money, not cost money. If you're looking at 14,000 or more membership. Now, that's a lot of potential for problems and grievances. If you have a contract in a 700-member union, I'm looking at, we probably have anyways between 200 to 500 grievances in the 700-member contract. With 14,000 employees or more, the potential is astronomical at if you have, especially if you have an administration that may be conducive to pushing the envelope a little bit.
And that's a valid point, Senator. You're certainly entitled to that view. Um, I'm here to represent constituents in my district, and the, the question is, do the taxpayers agree with you? No matter what, the taxpayers are still paying for this. So do the taxpayers agree that they're getting bang for their buck?
Any further questions? Representative Hart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Ward, is this contract not an agreement between the state and the public employees?
I believe it is an agreement between the public sector union and the state of Maine.
Right, agreement. So the state of Maine agreed to these terms?
That's true. They, it was negotiated, and typically a representative, uh, that's the case. I'm not saying that, that two parties didn't come together and bargained with faith, and they did. Um, that's, that's certainly within the purging of the team. That's a responsibility that they're charged with. But the, the state of Maine and its taxpayers were not in the room, and my question is, is what would they say? And I can tell you this is unanimous with all the people that I've spoken with, and I wasn't trying to throw some, you know, inflammatory language out there. I wasn't trying to sound like an open-shop, anti-union sort of person. I said, "Did you know that this exists? And how do you feel about this?" And it was absolutely unanimous with everyone that I've ever spoken with about this. So I felt as though this should be eliminated. In the end, Representative, the taxpayers are the ones putting the bill--
But they're also putting the bill with the salaries, so why don't you have a bill to negotiate salaries by a legislature?
Well, the, with the, with the salaries, I think the taxpayers are expecting that they're going to get what they're paying for. That they're not going to get something that benefits a private entity. And they don't know. They clearly don't know. And I heard when I was reading my testimony murmurs from behind me, I'm sure there's a lot of people in this audience that didn't know either. So the, every time that a bargaining unit sits down with the union management, or with the management team, and sits down to do a negotiation, the, the slate is clean. We start at, at zero. No one owns anything. There's no right to ownership, no property value, with even past contract provisions, unless something explicitly says so. So is it time to end this part of that practice, this part of those negotiations? And I would guarantee you that if this makes the nightly news tonight, and if there are people out there writing articles about this testimony, I'm guaranteeing that you're going to hear from constituents on this, because they don't know it and they don't agree to it. Just thank you.
Representative Hart?
Thank you, Senator. Thank you again, Representative. Um, I hear the, I hear the thought you're making, Representative Ward, but I think you could also look at the other side of this, in which I imagine a scenario in which I, this is my understanding that this is used to resolve issues at the lowest possible level. So this is actually ends up saving taxpayers a lot of money rather than going through costly lawsuits. So I, I ask you to just look at that side of it. I think the other thing that comes to mind is I think this could, this, I mean, how do you feel about another, a different hypothetical scenario? This could be a firefighter sitting down with his fire chief to talk about properties of safety. I mean, isn't that in the essence of interests of the taxpayer and public safety?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Hackett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Ward, do you have any idea how many buildings in the units garage throughout the state of Maine for the 14,000 employees throughout the whole state?
I, I don't, Senator, and that would be a great piece of research, and I would also love to bring to the work session if our analysts can, can discover this. The total cost to all taxpayers, municipal, county, and state, that in just the last 10 years for union release time, I would love to have that be something that we bring to the work session. I think it would, it would shock a lot of people.
Representative Hackett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was trying to, there's quite a lot of information here. I was trying to scan through there quickly, but in your, um, in your research of, of these agreements, did you, did you find any restrictions or, or anything like that on what they can and cannot do on that release time?
Nothing specific. The agreements deal with different types of release time, or if these are just the four that I looked at, Representative Hackett said, there were literally dozens more. And, but they're lengthy agreements, they're 40 to 50 pages long usually, and it takes a while to read through them. Took me about four hours to fully understand those. And they're very deep inside. I think these were found in cases like 29, 30, 31. And if you read them and then compare the language that I've underlined, and then look back at the three different types of union release time that I described in my testimony, I think you'll find that each of them fall pretty squarely into one or more of those categories.
Just scan through this real quickly. Board of directors to attend a maximum of four one-day meetings for board of directors. Board of directors shall consist of 16 members, 12 from the council. And so you're, you're looking at 20 or more people being paid at least four days every year, just in this particular case, by the taxpayers for union business, not whatever their job is, you know, whatever their job is they're assigned to do.
And I believe that's within, that clause was found within that bargaining unit contract, that agreement. And, and the reason why I include just the cover page is because the same clause appears in every single one of these, and there were more. I just, I didn't go through them. I don't know if I'd find the same everywhere, but I would love to have some research and a summary on this, because I think that this committee would need that information. Let's go down through every public sector union. Let's analyze the clauses that they have, and let's take a look at the total cost. I have to imagine that there are records, at least there should be records, because the, the research I did estimates that this costs the taxpayers of this nation a billion dollars a year.
Senator Hackett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your thought about getting the, the cost for, for this is, is, is good, provided we get all the factors involved, because if we find out how much the total contract was, how many man-hours it worked, how many time hours spent on, uh, what's the term you used? Release time? How many grievances were, were filed? How much time attributed to free time was devoted to grievances? How much time a management spent on those grievances? How the grievances turned out? Were they more in favor of the hourly or the salary? Were they justifiable or not? So in context, I understand what you're saying, and as a taxpayer, I would expect the same thing, but someone who has lived through this free time, I was a union president, I was a shop steward, the whole nine yards, I understand what it is. And for time off to go to training, the better trained union steward, the quicker you can resolve problems that rely. So, I mean, it's all in context of what you want to say. You can, you can have one thing, one thing. So would you agree we need a, a combination of all the facts?
Well, honestly, what my thoughts are on this issue are a whole lot less important than the taxpayers that I represent, Senator. I would ask them that question, whether or not they think that ancillary information is, is pertinent. I think the one piece of data that should be eliminated here is the state of Maine, what is the total cost for this activity? And let the, let the argument be made, and let the public judge for themselves whether or not they think they're getting value for their dollar. And, and Senator, I can't emphasize enough, I know it was three or four or five years ago now, uh, but we're, you know, the legislature's taken a fair amount of heat for what happened up in East Long Island. I know that at least one representative on this committee has, has also raised that concern, and perhaps this committee and this legislature's made bold moves to fix that. Hopefully, it'll never happen again. But the public is entitled at this point in time to really view this with a fair degree of skepticism. You know, I think the state, and I thought when I was a state employee, I think we take a bum rap a lot. Uh, it's really easy to criticize inefficiency in state government, but it's, it's a lot easier to criticize inefficiency in state government when something like this comes to light and the taxpayers get wind of it. And I think in the long haul, the state government and its employees are going to be a lot better off if you put this out there for everyone to see and then decide if we're going to fix it.
Representative Austin, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Ward, the reference was made to negotiating wages. Is it not true, by procedure, by policy, by law, that at the end of the day, with that contract negotiated, that approval up or down, I should say, support up or down, has to come from the actual representatives and senators which make up the legislature?
I'm honestly not familiar with the, with the exact process in terms of who has filed authorization of state and county contracts.
Well, I think that that information could be brought to us and shared perhaps with the work session. I do have the answer, but I think we all need to hear.
Representative Hackett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few weeks ago, we heard, we heard testimony on a bill regarding elected officials serving in the, in the negotiations of contracts at the municipal level. The argument was made that we needed folks who have the final decision-making power, because they ultimately represent the taxpayers and have a direct interest on what happens in those negotiations. The bill went down, I think it was a party line bill on this committee. You're sort of making a similar, a similar argument here, that we need tax, those who represent the taxpayers, those who are elected, to make decisions regarding collective bargaining. So I guess I'm trying to differentiate the difference between that, what piece of legislation that we heard a few weeks ago, and this piece of legislation. What sort of has, has your mind changed in terms of the, the, the participation of a person who represents taxpayers being involved?
That's a very good question, Representative Hackett. Thank you for asking it. It's, I, I can't emphasize this enough, Representative. It isn't necessarily what this representative standing before you thinks. The reason that this question is being brought to you is because I think we each have to take a good, hard look at what we think the taxpayers that we represent think. Keep in mind that release time can take in a whole host of different activities. It's certainly not just negotiations, but it can be filing grievances, it can be attending, uh, you know, out-of-state trading conferences, it can be collectionary, you know, it can be a whole host of things. And I think when you take them as a whole, and you look at, and hopefully we have the data when it comes to the work session, when you take a look at the cost, I think when you, when you look at that question, how would the people in your own district feel about this if they understood it? And maybe they'll agree, and if they agree, and you represent them, then vote, vote appropriately to represent the people there. So, you know, I, I hope that I've answered the question. It's really more of a focus on what the people that we think that we represent think about.
Any further questions? Representative Ward?
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, and I agree with you, Representative. The only problem is, is the sensationalization, sensationalization of things are, is a lot of times, the soundbites come out without all the facts. So I would agree, if this comes out in proportion to everything, if citizens know everything, I don't think they'd have a problem.
Any further questions?
Don't you agree? That's what we, that's--
Just going to remind members of the committee that we're asking clarifying questions. Um, okay. Any further questions for Representative Ward? Thank you very much. I'd now like to invite any co-sponsors of any of the six bills that we've heard of. Well, five, but one of them aren't. So any legislators or co-sponsors who should testify in the Senate or Congress during the evaluation?
Patience is a virtue. You guys are going to need a lot of it. Thank you, Senator Ward. Representative Hart, thank you for, and honorable members of the committee for taking my testimony. I'm actually here to speak in favor of 404 and 489, and I would probably be a proponent of the other bills as well. The issue at hand today, collective bargaining or right to work, as I understand it, is comprised of two sectors of our economy: the private sector and the public sector. There are vast differences in these two sectors. In the private sector, all transactions, contracts, et cetera, are made voluntarily. To stay in business, you must satisfy consumers. Competition improves the quality of goods and keeps prices as low as possible. I believe that prices would be lower if it weren't for numerous government mandates, taxes, and regulations. Therefore, it is the public sector unions to which I take exception and not the private unions. The public sector, unlike the private sector, does not have to earn a profit to stay in business, and on many occasions, public union bosses negotiate with politicians who depend on union contributions to stay in office. This is especially so at the federal level. That information is available at opensecrets.org, and it is an eye-opener, to say the least. There is no right that forces an individual to pay one nickel to any collective bargaining agency to retain employment. In fact, in doing so, the government-public bargaining unions, I believe, have violated the First, Fifth, and Thirteenth Amendments to the Constitution. And I will get your testimony. My, my computer kind of went on the fritz this morning, and I only have a rough draft here, but what I have is the First Amendment, "Congress should make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people to peaceably assemble and petition the government for a redress of grievances." The Second is the Fifth Amendment, and I won't read it to you, I will get that to you, and you probably have a copy in the desk somewhere. And the other is the Thirteenth Amendment, which cites slavery, neither slavery or involuntary servitude except as a punishment for crime. Wherever party shall be duly convicted shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction. The government was instituted to protect the life, liberty, and property of the citizens by enforcing the rule of law at the behest of the citizens. It used to be that the public sector employees were the servants of the people, so to speak. And the taxpayers were the masters, as in, he pays the piper, gets to name the tune. Over the years, the law has become a more demanding and twisted system of legalized plunder, where the government has become the master and the private sector doesn't even have a seat at the table. The essentials, essentials of a free-market economy are voluntary action and the mutual consent of legal contracts. Today, the law has become the handmaiden of all sorts of shenanigans. Government itself is guilty of the very things it's supposed to punish. The taxpayer should have the head seat at the table in public sector negotiations, and they should be fully transparent and open to the public, who shoulder, who shoulder the payrolls. And I'll leave you with this pearl of wisdom from the law by Fred Astor, which was intended in the 1800s. See if the law takes from one, some persons what belongs to them and gives it to other persons to whom it does not belong. See if the law benefits one citizen at the expense of another by doing what that citizen cannot do himself without committing a crime. Then abolish this law without delay, for it is not only an evil itself, but it also is a fertile source for further evils because it invites reprisals. If such a law, which may be an isolated case, is not abolished immediately, it will spread, multiply, and develop into a system. And I believe that it has. And I'd be happy to take any questions, but I really think that I would be woefully inadequate because there are so many experts behind me that will talk about this.
Representative Hart? Yeah, thank you, Senator. Thank you, Representative Ward. Nice to see you.
It's always lovely to see you.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear. Do you understand that these bills apply both to public and private sectors?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I do. I actually, my husband, my brother was a union negotiator for a private company, and this was quite about 15 years ago, and at that time, the, the company itself overthrew the union because they weren't delivering on the promises they made. And at that, now my husband works for that company, and since they overthrew the union, their benefits have gone up exponentially, and they all do very, very well.
Any further questions?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I caught reference to what you said regarding, you know, the taxpayers should be at the table. There are 1.3 million people in the state of Maine. Do you think they should all be at the table? Who, who embodies the taxpayers? I guess I'm sort of confused.
I think when it comes to any union negotiations in the public sector, that frankly, I, I don't believe that there, there should be, that the public unions should negotiate. I think that all of the negotiations should be left up to the taxpayers.
In what, in what way? I guess I'm unclear. So how, how do you leave that up to the taxpayers?
I think that we should always have a final say in the matters, and I think that as far as especially contributions, political contributions, that those should be more transparent, especially with PAC monies and things like that, to show where those monies come from and how they're spent.
Any further questions? Representative Hart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you yourself a union worker?
No, I'm not.
And do you know any union bosses?
Uh, yes, I do.
And who would, who would that be?
I won't say any names.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Their family members.
Any other co-sponsors?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other co-sponsors? Yes.
Hi, Senator. Pleased to be here. How's, how's your morning going?
Slow.
It's quite, quite a hike from over-- It's quite, quite a hike from over in the Health and Human Services.
I know, right? Yeah. That was all the 20 stats.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, I'm, I'm here for LD 1010. So Senator Ward, Representative Hurdick, and distinguished members of the Committee on Labor, Commerce, Research, and Economic Development. My name's Senator Eric Braekey, and I represent the people of Auburn, New Blomster, Poland, Minut, and Cannon Falls. I'm here today as a co-sponsor for LD 1010, enacted toward public employers' flexibility to achieve efficiency and quality in management. This bill would give school boards the right to subcontract out non-teaching work to help save money for the classroom. We must keep in mind the purpose of our education system. Our schools are not jobs programs. They are kids' programs. We want to ensure we acquire the best employees and treat them well in order to keep them, not for its own sake, but so that we have the best possible education and care for our kids. As we consider staffing policies for our schools, we must keep this goal in mind, putting the education of our kids first. Currently, subcontracting non-teaching work has to be negotiated, which means protracted discussions, large lawyer fees, and unpredictable outcomes. The current system's unpredictability means school boards can't bank on savings, even in a budget crisis. Recently, in Auburn, the board finally won the right to subcontract out its busing, which will save the district $1.5 million over five years, but it costs the district $60,000 in lawyer's fees. In a case in Scarborough, a, a proposal to subcontract out custodial work would have saved $250,000 annually. The arbitration board ruled against the subcontracting. The board stated that saving money was not a good enough reason. Scarborough could not subcontract, and the city still had to pay out $70,000 in legal fees. This bill is about investing in students and making financial decisions that support kids and teachers. It gives school boards flexibility to save money, and that flexibility is needed now more than ever. In the legislature, we often talk about finding relief for our property taxpayers. So let's pass this bill and give them that little bit of relief. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Senator Braekey, Representative Hurdick, and then Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Senator. Welcome, Senator Braekey. You're asserting in your testimony that this would give school boards the right to subcontract non-teaching work? I don't see that in the bill that we got in front of us. Is that just a misunderstanding, I think?
No, that's, that's, that's what I've, that's what I've heard about the bill. If you have any questions for some of the experts behind me, I'm sure they'd be happy to speak to you.
You're asking for your own clarification. This would be any, so correct. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. I think the cases in Auburn and in Scarborough were about busing and janitorial, janitorial work. My understanding of the bill, and I, I, it's very possible I could be wrong, but I know that there are some people who are more on this, involved in this than I am, who, who can speak to that.
Any other questions for Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning, Senator.
Morning, Representative.
Looking at your testimony, do you have, do you have issues with certain members of working society? It appears you have possibly an issue with attorneys?
Oh, I have no, I have no problem with attorneys receiving a, a, a justly due legal fees, but questions whether or not the process in which we need to go through all those legal hoops in order to do something that's common sense and is going to save the taxpayers' money and improve our education system. Just have questions about whether or not we should, we should make our local school boards and our local property taxpayers have to jump through all those hoops.
So are you trying to say that, that that money might be better spent in the schools as opposed to an attorney's pocket?
Yeah, I think one of the problems I think we often see is that when we talk about school funding is oftentimes so much of the dollars we spend, get spent before they reach the classroom. And this is one of those very cases, you know, where we're talking about in, in Auburn, $60,000 spent on lawyer's fees, in Scarborough, $70,000 in legal fees. How much, how much good for our kids' education could the, could that combined $130,000 do if it was actually going towards educating our kids? Thank you. Not to mention the, not to mention the $250,000 that, that Scarborough would have saved if they had been able to do this, and the $1.5 million that Auburn is now able to save now that they are able to subcontract.
I'm not sure, sure who had their hand up for Representative Braekey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious, do you know if those legal fees were, were expended during the entire negotiation of contracts, or were they specifically for that, that particular negotiation?
My understanding is that it was for this particular negotiation, this particular negotiation in, in, in having to take this to an arbitration board and fight on this particular right to subcontract in this particular case.
We could have that verified and confirmed for the work session.
I think there are probably people who have asked me that more specifically. Senator Penner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your, in your testimony, you say that recently Auburn, the board finally won the right to subcontract, you know, the busing, which will save 1.5 million in five years. Is it guaranteed savings if you're, if you're getting, if you're changing carriers? Is there a guarantee that you're going to save? And if you're going to save, does it come at the qual, at the cost of quality?
Everything, my understanding is that at least the quality we're seeing in Auburn, and we expect to see in Auburn, is, is on par with, with what we have. I would say I think there are some folks coming up behind me who are much more intimately familiar with the particulars of those particular situations, and I'm sure they could answer that question in more detail than I can.
Just some members of the committee are aware, we do have people from both Scarborough and Auburn who are coming up, so Senator Braekey probably is not an expert on those, on those cases. Any further questions?
Thank you very much.